What tonight's actual agenda is. So, are there any items that you want Mr. City Clerk Chase to notify us about?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make an addition to one item. It's other business A. The memo doesn't have the report attached to it right now. So earlier today, council received the actual voucher dispersment report via email. And we do have a printed out copy for viewing too, if anyone wants to. So that would just be the addition to that item. And that is all I have to add.
Okay, council members, anything that you would want to change or add or reorder?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of what the agenda is signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. Consent agenda pursuant to council rules, one motion, non-debatable, will approve the recommendation noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the consent agenda. I would like to remove, just to congratulate, thank people, the G, except Minnesota hockey skate donation. And E, termination and release of easement, which is on 12 to 15 of our materials. Does anybody else have anything else they want to remove? Does anybody have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with items E and G set aside.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, save and accept E and G, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. What did we approve? We approved the placing on file of the city council minutes from the meeting of January 2nd, 2024. The city council work session minutes from January 9th, 2024. We renewed our workers' compensation insurance for 2024. And please remind me that I would like to talk about that at the end, Tim. We accepted a quote for replacement of a snow blower. We appointed an absentee ballot board. We approved a resolution for the Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant Application. And we authorized an agreement with Home Free Domestic Assault Intervention Project. And we approved various licenses. The question I have with regard to termination of the release of easement is on pages 12 to 15 of our packet. And I think I might have pulled the wrong thing. But I just had some markups on that that I gave to you, Chase, with regard to making the punctuation consistent. There were some, somewhere as clauses followed by semicolon and, some followed by just semicolon. And I just tried to make it consistent. So that, oh, and my name was indicated as Bill Blonigan rather than the more formal for contract purposes. William Blonigan, you changed those, right? I mean, at my direction, it wasn't you that did it on the markup.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we'll get those updated, we'll get those updates processed properly. The signature sheets, I'm not sure if I handed them over or not. I think we got the outdated version from the city engineer when they were handed over, but we'll make sure to make those updates.
Okay, so, but it's nothing, there's no content thing that's changed in here what I recommended to the city manager or to Chase, whoever I recommended it to. Okay, so with that, and I'll hand you what my markups are here, council members, so you can check on me. So with that, I will move to order the adoption of that resolution at consent agenda item E.
Second.
Is there a, any discussion with regard to that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carried. And then the other thing I, which drew from the consent agenda was G on page 18. And that was just that. I'll read the entire staff report. The Robbinsdale Recreation Department has been offered a donation of 20 pairs of youth skates by Minnesota Hockey. These skates will be available for use at Sandburn Park Warming House. Having skates available for use by the community will decrease barriers in park usage for those who don't own skates. The recommendation is to approve the acceptance of the skate donation by Minnesota Hockey of 20 pairs of youth skates. So I just wanted to thank Minnesota Hockey, acknowledge that, well, that was a very nice thing to do for Robbinsdale. Not everybody donates 20 pair of skates to us. So, anybody have a motion with regard to that one?
Yes, I move that we approve the acceptance of the skate donation by Minnesota Hockey of the 20 pairs of youth skates. And thank you to the organization for that generous donation.
Second.
There is a second, and Mia is probably very happy that those skates will be in Ward Two. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. Okay, so now we go to presentations, and tonight there are none. We go to public hearings, and tonight there are none. Go to old business, I don't see any of that. We go to new business, which now we're talking about approval of pay equity report submissions. And I assume city manager Tim Sandvik is going to tell us about that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So every three years, local jurisdictions, including municipalities, have to submit a report through the state, through the Minnesota Management and Budget Office, what's called the Pay Equity Report. This is through the Pay Equity Act. That was passed some years ago, and it's seen some different iterations over the years. But at a high level, how I sometimes describe this to folks, if you can go back to your days of the X and Y axis, from left to right, or whichever way you want to invert, positions within the city are assigned a certain number of points. And points include responsibility, supervision, hazard, a variety of things that go into it. And correlating to the number of points is a wage. And the intent of the Pay Equity Act is to ensure that job classes dominated by both female or male do not have an underpayment ratio that is, well, better to say it, that is not favorable to one gender or the other. It ensures that, you know, these job-dominated classes can be at an underpayment ratio that's the same or not at an underpayment ratio, that if they're paid above essentially what these class points would be comparable to other municipalities. So ultimately, the state has this large set of data that indicates, again, you know, it's not always a one for one, but if we have, say, utility workers or parks workers that are largely dominated as a male class, or some clerical positions that are maybe dominated by a female class, the points associated may be the same, but going through this process ensures that it is the points that are what's assessing the wage for those respective positions. Again, this is something we go through every three years. We've gone through, and we do have a high level of what the numbers look like. We are required to submit this by the end of January. I would note, I haven't heard final 2023 numbers, so that'd be reporting for 2022. Our 2024 report is reporting for December 31st, 2023. But traditionally, between a quarter and a third of these submissions are found to be non-compliant. And I don't want that to come off as worrisome. In fact, I think the positive is that it gives organizations an opportunity to step back. Now, initial crunching of the numbers indicate that we are compliant. We don't know that officially until we get a response from the state. I believe one of the questions will be, can we see the actual report? What we will do is present to council here in a matter of weeks, all depending on the workload at the state level. Like I say, they get a ton of these, they're due at the end of January. So I don't have a date as to when we'll get it back. But as soon as we do and we're able to provide that to council, council will review. Would share that this was part of the discussion going back to the budgeting for 2024. It's been some years since the city of Robbinsdale has gone through a compensation and classification study. And a comp study is not solely just focused on wages. Again, it goes through, and we reassess to make sure that the points associated with all the different job classes is appropriate. So the backend gives us a long-term plan, again, both with wages, and ensures that our point system is accurate. And this, again, is an effort that we intend to do whether we're compliant or not. Because, you know, today is a snapshot of, again, December 31st, 2023. But as we go forward and make more adjustments, we want to ensure that we have a long-term plan, at least for the next few years. So all that being said, staff is happy to respond to questions, comments, or concerns. But we are asking that council by motion approve the submission of the 2023 Pay Equity Report to the state that will be reviewed here in a number of weeks.
So, council members, questions?
No, that's a very thorough explanation. I had some questions, but I think you answered all of them by that summary. So thank you.
So when you said 25 to 33% of these reports are found to be non-compliant, that wasn't saying that of our reports, that was saying of all the cities and entities that report to the state? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, that's correct. In any given year, that number fluctuates, but there is some level of consistency. And again, the Pay Equity Act determines would jurisdictions qualify. But practically, all cities, counties, there are some governing agencies that are also required. I forget the number in total, but it's hundreds and hundreds. So in a given year, it could be, you know, between 100 and 200 that are found to be non-compliant.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the submission of the 2023 Pay Equity Report to the state of Minnesota?
Yeah, I can make that motion. I move that we approve the submission of the 2023 Pay Equity Report to the state.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, new business, item B, is a council review of body worn camera system audit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Again, another, I don't want to call it an obligation because it makes it sound like something we don't want to do. We're more than happy to participate in, again, this process. Per Minnesota State statute, similarly, the Robbinsdale Police Department is required to, at least biannually, with every, within every couple of years, go through a body worn camera audit. The city essentially goes through, much like we do with like our financial auditor otherwise, hires an independent group that's approved to do this kind of work for the state. And this most recent time around essentially covered an audit period of September 1st, 2022 through the 28th of February, 2023. The, this case or this set of audits, again, much like the financial audit, what they do is they come in and say, we want to review certain policies, and we want to review literally certain instances of body worn camera. And 32 random cases were reviewed based on the body worn camera conducted by the Minnesota Security Consortium, which was the independent contractor, is found to be that through the WatchGuard Body Worn Camera System, the city of Robbinsdale and the Robbinsdale Police Department was in accordance with the requirements of Minnesota State statute. The report is attached to your item here. And again, the request that staff is making is by motion, acknowledge receipt of the Robbinsdale Police Department 2023 Body Worn Camera Audit presented by the Minnesota Security Consortium, and confirm that the city council has reviewed and has been satisfied with the information provided. Staff is happy to respond to questions, comments, or concerns.
Council members?
I think it means it's a good thing that we're, it sounds like we're in compliance with the statute that this requires. So I'm happy to see that. And I didn't really have any other thoughts behind that, beyond that, I should say.
So we hired an independent expert agency to do that. And I think that's better than having our own police department do the audit. We probably didn't have the time or the expertise to do it as well as they did. But the fact that there's this layer of independence makes this more reliable to me. Let's put it that way, not that I don't disbelieve anybody. And I'm, I want to thank the police department for being so good at obeying all the various different rules with regard to body worn cameras, blurring out things, saving them for the right amount of time, not showing them to inappropriate people, showing them to the appropriate people, having the correct documentation. This report is seven pages long. There's, on one page alone, page four, I read nine different things that the police department was specifically required to do to comply with the requirements. And they passed all of those, they did all of those on all of the other pages or most of the other pages. There's a variety of other things that they're supposed to do. And they, they kind of, they kind of passed with flying colors. So I'm happy to do that. I, the reporter on page three, the company, I wish in the last sentence on page three where they are talking about the officers wearing their body worn camera equipment and activating it during specific instances. In the last sentence, they say, "In virtually all cases, the patrol officers appeared to be using their BWC appropriately and activating recordings as outlined in the policy section seven, general guideline for recording." I wish the company would have quantified with a parenthetical after virtually, you know, two out of three cases, that could be virtually, what they sampled, three cases, or 99 out of 100. I wish they would have quantified that because as the people that are reviewing this and passing the motion that says, yeah, we're satisfied, I think that would be helpful to us. But other than that, I mean, this was a flying colors pass here on the, on this independent thing that we have.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I can just respond quickly to that, I'll read the sentence again. "In virtually all cases, the patrol officers appeared to be using their body worn cameras appropriately and activating recordings as outlined in the policy section seven, general guidelines for recording." I reached out because that raised question to that. We read through this report and it says we're in compliance, and we list all these things. The two examples that I got, and this, I think, speaks to it, and I'll refer to the end, what we say at the end here. There was a circumstance where an officer took a report at the PD station over the phone. And within the policy, it says, "When taking a report, to have your body worn camera on." And in that circumstance, that there's no reason to do that because it's being recorded as such. The other was that an officer-
So what you mean is that the actual phone call is being recorded? So why do you need a body worn camera to be duplicative and not as good a recording? Is that what you're saying?
That was what was my understanding from that. Yeah, I don't, I can't cite the case, and there's not, there's not more information I can provide for that one.
Okay.
Similarly, an officer was called to an assist in a call, what was issued a code for, essentially a call off. And what had happened was, again, without being able to provide details, while more than a mile away, they were, they turned around, were headed towards where they were called to, were then called off, and in that period had not turned on their camera. The policy would require them to, of course, record when they got to the incident. But in that short amount of time, when they turned around, the camera was not turned on. So by the time the turn, the call was called off, it essentially extinguished that requirement. And I do want to note the conclusion on the last page, the, those are two pieces within the policy that I think what I would describe as gray area. It wasn't a violation of statute, it was not a violation of the policy outright. That's where the word virtual came in, and again, where I think we both had our light bulb go off. But would, again, read the conclusion here. "Based on the result, the Robbinsdale Police Department Body Worn Camera Audit conducted by the Minnesota Security Consortium, we were able to demonstrate that Robbinsdale Police Department is using the Motorola WatchGuard BWC system in accordance with requirements of Minnesota Statute 13825 and 6268473."
So, yeah, this, my understa, so thank you for those explanations, they make sense. And I take it, and there were things in our materials, I believe, that said this. This is sort of like a financial audit. They do sampling. We don't have enough money or time for them to listen to every body warm camera recording or watch it that there is. So I under, I understand that that's what this is. That last thing you read, based on the results of the audit, the consortium, by the consortium, we were able to demonstrate that Robbinsdale Police Department, I'm thinking if these people are our people that are auditing this for the city council, they were able to determine this, not to demonstrate it. If they are a branch of the police department, working for the police department, maybe they want to demonstrate this. I, I don't know which thing they're doing, but it seems to me they're probably working for us, and they probably should change that to determine next year. If that, if that's what I'm saying is true, that they're, they're not trying to demonstrate it, they're trying to be non-bias determiners. So other than that, that, I think, and again, I'm nitpicking a little stuff here. This, this has so many things in this seven-page report that the police department is required to do, and they pass it with flying colors as far as this audit goes, so that's great. So we're being asked to approve, what is this? We're being asked to, this is on page 33. Okay, well, you, either one of you can read that or make that motion if you want to.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we acknowledge receipt of the RPD 2023 Body Worn Camera Audit prepared by the Minnesota Security Consortium, and confirm that the council has reviewed and has been satisfied with the information provided.
Second.
So, yeah, so we did nitpick at this, and so we did our job. We reviewed it and indicated we're satisfied, so that's good on us. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed say no. That motion carries unanimously. Next, we have other business. And as Chase Peterson and I indicated earlier, we've been provided an update and an update in person here with regard to the vouchers. Is there a motion to approve dispersment requests for the period ending today, 1/16/2024?
So moved.
Second.
And there's, and obviously, we don't have any questions, otherwise you'd just speak up. So all those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. So are there any administrative reports by the staff?
Thanks, Mayor, and members of the council. I've got one update for you all, and not really an update, just kind of letting people know that there is an election coming up if they weren't aware already. We have the presidential nomination primary, which the actual election will be on March 5th this year. But early voting starts on Friday. So people can come down to City Hall from 8:00 to 4:30 and vote in person if they want. So that will happen all the way up until the election. And there's more information on our website. And you can also go to the Secretary of State's website where you can find out if you're voted, registered to vote, or where your ward is, or any of that information. So we're happy to help you if you have questions like that. We also are in need of election judges. So if you or anyone you know wants to be an election judge, we are in the process of getting that scheduled for training. And it would be, you know, three hours of training, and then you work whenever you're available on the election day. So, and there's several other elections happening in Robbinsdale in 2024, so you could also work those as well. So that is all I have for tonight.
Okay, anything from you, Tim?
Mr. Mayor, Council, just briefly, I look forward to the Human Rights Commission does their goal setting, annual goal setting tomorrow night. I'll go and be a fly on the wall for that. Next week, similarly, the Parks Commission hosts their kickoff. We've got some exciting projects to talk about and what the year will look like. So some strategic discussions certainly there as well. The city is currently hiring for a number of positions that people might be on the lookout for, an assistant planner, a building official, engineering technician. We always have some revolving positions. So if you're looking for that next gig, give us a look. All that information's on the city website. And then would also note that the city council, in that theme of strategic discussions, has set Monday, February 12th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the goal setting session for 2024. I know staff is looking forward to that.
So the jobs that you referenced are great jobs. They're an employer that's very reliable in paying you your check. You get a bunch of benefits, healthcare, you get a defined benefit pension, and holidays and personal time off, and sick days, which is personal time. So I would encourage people to look at the website. So with that, city council, communications, member Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think just want to extend, you know, if, that if people had a, hope people had a good Martin Luther King Junior Day. I was kind of related to that, would maybe think of it as, this other thing is, I was invited to celebrate the UAW's contract victory, a new contract this weekend by the local union here. And so just want to extend, you know, congratulations to them again for, thanks for having me come out and say a couple of words. And then also just how that ties into Martin Luther King Junior Day. You know, I mean, not only was a civil rights leader, he was also a labor leader and was in, when he was, you know, assassinated in Memphis, he was there supporting striking sanitation workers. So just want to, you know, extend that and keep all of that in mind. And just, yeah, if people were able to relax or volunteer yesterday, if you had the day off, I hope it was, was good.
Thank you. Member Parisian?
Yes, thank you. I also hope that everyone had a good and meaningful Martin Luther King Junior Day. Thank you for those sentiments, Erin. Also, I, it's hard to believe we are halfway through January of 2024. And one thing that formal, former council member Sheila Webb was very good at was talking about mental health. So I thought it is a good season to remind folks to keep talking about mental health, ask how your loved ones are doing with regards to their mental health. And I also wanted to talk briefly about a resource that's available within Hennepin County, and it's called the Cope, Cope Mobile Crisis Response. And this is a no-cost resource that also has bilingual and bicultural staff available for face-to-face phone and video visits, and also uses interpreters when needed. So in order to get in touch with Cope, one easy way to do that is to call 988 from anywhere in the state of Minnesota to reach the local county crisis team. So I wanted to take a moment and acknowledge former council member Sheila Webb's efforts in talking about mental health, and I wanted to continue to do so here tonight. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I meant to withdraw Consent Agenda item C, our premium to the League of Minnesota Cities, which they're the best insurance company for us because if we have a good experience, they give us money back. Their object is to work for us and have what they need in the way of premiums. But they're not, not motivated by making a profit and giving dividends and large increases to their CEOs or anything like that. So it's a great organization, the League of Minnesota Cities. And somebody's come here within the last couple of years and said, yeah, almost nobody that's a city doesn't use the League of Minnesota Cities because it's the best deal in the state. However, not their fault, but the premium, we, they, they judge our workers' compensation by having a experience modification number. And if you're at 1.0, you're average. And if you're, like we were, at 0.92 for the calendar year 2023, we're below average as far as how much we pay, and we save a lot of money. Our modifier went to 1.4 for 2024, which means, whoa, we're paying for workers' comp 40% over the average. And we have a history of, unlike School District 281, we have a history of being below the average and saving a lot of money. So that number went, according to the staff report, premiums are up 36.25% compared to last year. And our 2023 premium of $389,000 went up to $530,000 this year. So we can do the math, and that's, that's a lot. So- So part of it is, I'm sure, it used to be all the increased costs of police officers having PTSD claims. Can we just, you can talk about it tonight if you want, but can we just get more information on that? Like, what should we be doing? Are there ways to get back to being a below-average payer? Or if not, can we get to a place where not paying one-hundred-forty percent of the average? So, anyway, that's a thing you can address with us later, but I think that's a big, I mean, what is the, what is five-hundred-thirty-thousand minus three-eighty-nine? That's a lot of money. I mean, that's more than, I mean, we could have taken a percentage, one percent or more, off of our increase in taxes if we had that amount of money. So that's thirty plus ten, four, that's about a hundred-forty-thousand dollars, one-thirty-nine maybe. Okay, Seven Dreams Foundation in March has its annual gala, which you can attend in person or online, and Seven Dreams Foundation tries to get things for District two-eight-one Robbinsdale School District students that the regular budget doesn't normally get. And this year, it's, I believe, theater and music, you know, trying to get them some additional help. They've been successful in things that they've done in the past. I want to thank Tim, I think you're doing a good job in getting new employees. We, with today's market, it seems like it's an ever-fasting changeover in employees that we have here at the city, because employees are in more equal bargaining power, and they can leave here, not that they don't like us, but they can leave here and get more money in a different opportunity. You know, I think, I think it made, I met Joanne of HR, and I think that was a good hire, and what do I know about it, but she seemed to make a good impression on me. You hired Kayla as a sustainability director, we all know Kayla, we probably all think that was a great hire. And I want to thank Terry Zajak, who is our, our building inspector. I thought he changed forms there, you were pointing over here. I want to thank him for some, several great years of being a building inspector. I've seen him, he's come to my house to inspect things, and I, but I've seen him with other people, and he had a nice demeanor for people in situations that might not want to be hearing about things that they had to do that would cost them more money. So that's cool. So that's everything I have. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no or nay. That motion carries, we're adjourned. Say that again?
I didn't want you to leave Chase out in our new hires. You were going through the list of new hires, and there's one right there.
What do you mean? What happened to you?